Hey, everybody. We're live and we're back and I'm welcome to welcome back. To welcome back Salika Thomas, who's running for Oakland City Council at large and my new friend. Uh, how you doing?
I'm doing great. Thank you.
Outstanding, outstanding. And um, not only all that. It's tell us, you know, as we've talked about this before, but oh, here, here we are. Let's see what this sounds like. Hold on a second.
Okay.
And uh, okay, it's a commercial. Uh, skip ass. And oh, okay, it's a commercial. Uh, skip ass. Alright. Oh, okay. And the good news forces is no distortion. That's why I did that. So I will leave her home free. How's that?
It's great.
You know, folks who may be wondering what the heck I'm doing, I did that because yesterday, we had a distortion problem. So if you went looking for my friend and us talking about her wonderful raison d'etre from running for Oakland City Council, and you found the broken link you thought you probably, you know, say expelled to deleted, Zenny. And I wouldn't blame you. But we got it all straightened out. And here's Ms. Thomas in all her glory to tell us once again. First of all, who are you?
Well, my name is Salika Thomas. I was born and raised in Oakland, California. Um, I ten- I graduated from Fremont High School and then I graduated from Laney College and received my cosmetology license and also my AA degree in science and cosmetology.
What was the? Aha, more white person. Why are you running for Oakland City Council District Three? Uh, District Three, District, uh, at-large District, sorry. Uh, maybe that's a Freudian slip. I don't, I uh, you know, but I, but I won't go there anyway.
It's okay. So I've been raised in Oakland all my life and I've seen a drastic change in Oakland. I've just seen so much trash, homeless, crimes, shootings, murder, everything. And I personally experienced, you know, a lot of crime happening my way. And so in, in my family. And one day it was just so much trash on my street. I kept calling 311 for them to pick it up. And they just never would respond to anything. And it was piling up homeless, just everywhere RVs. And I just got so sick and tired of it to the point where I said, I'm moving. So I had uh, found a house. We were going to do a contingent sale. We were going to sign a paperwork that Monday. That Saturday, um, I had woke up and I was feeling, you know, kind of sad that day because I was about to make this drastic change. And then all of a sudden, I ended up getting a uh, text out the blue from a company called Star Search that were looking for me. And it was on my sister's death date. So I had looked at it as a sign. And they had asked me, did I want to run for, um, they didn't know, I didn't know what I was going to run for, but they just said if I wanted to help my city. And they wanted to meet with me. So I went met with them.
They're called Star Search, like the TV show?
Well, it's the same name, but I don't think it's the same people.
Okay, huh.
Is, yes. And so they um, they had told me the positions that were available, which was City Council at large.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I said I was ready. I was passionate enough. So I went ahead and um, you know, told the people I didn't no longer want the house and that I wanted to fight for my city. And here I am.
Now, um, when now I get to this question. And folks, there's a lot of stuff that we already talked about. So if it seems like, you know, kind of jumping around, it's because some of my, we had this spirited conversation and we're gonna get right back to that flow. But when you already talked about one thing, you're kind of like, okay, I already said that. It didn't want to come at me like, I already said that. But but it does bear asking again, just for the purpose of, you know, doing the video, the way that we all both wanted it to come out. What was the aha moment? That made you say, ah, alright, right today. Do you remember the like, what time? Of the day or night? Or did you have an epiphany or a dream or a nightmare? What happened? When you just said doggone it, I'm just gonna take the bull by the horns and do this thing?
June 6th, on my sister's death day. And I had received a text telling me to calm down. But it was just the trash. I, I don't like looking at filth. It'd be upsetting my stomach. And it was nothing I can do about it because it was a car. If it was just trash and not, you know, I could have just went and cleaned it up myself. But it was an abandoned car and it had so much trash in it. And it was just trash everywhere. And it was on my block and I had to see it every day. And to see this trash and the homelessness out here, it's not mentally healthy. And so that's when I decided that I needed to do something about it. I was either want to move. But God said, no, you need to come and fight. So that's what I'm doing. Fight for my city.
Give us a picture of what from your perspective is going on in Oakland that's producing all the crime that we're experiencing, uh, that the news that's coming out. What is wrong?
Well, the first thing is is the laws is these laws are so soft. It's almost seeming very lawless. And I just feel like we have to defund those soft on crime politicians because if you are allowing people to steal $950, up to $950 without being prosecuted. That's a problem. Criminals seem like they have more rights than the civilians. You can't even stop a criminal. You can't touch them. You can't mace them. You can't do nothing. And it ain't no point of calling the police because it's gonna take an hour for them to come. It might take you 30 minutes to even get someone on the line, your dispatcher on the line to even let a police officer know what's going on. So criminals is having it their way right now. They, and it's starting to become an organized crime because they're not just going in there one by one no more. They going in with multiple people. And they're just taking whatever they want. And they getting a slap on the wrist for it. But if they had consequences, they wouldn't do it. Harsh consequences. I put no stealing that off.
Yeah. Yesterday, you counted a story to me. That was horrifying. And it, the way it was, I'll never forget it because I thought, how do you live in that environment? And you talked to me about how this gentleman was stalking you, I think, three times?
Yes. So um, he tried to break into my house three times. And I think that he was mentally um, challenged because the way he tried to break in my house, he was hanging on a bars at the bottom and he didn't have no tools or anything, but he was trying to climb towards my room. And the windows are down and they're locked. And so uh, finally, the third time, the police was able to come. And when they saw him, they saw him hanging on the bars. And they whipped their gun out, but he ends up running. It was like nine police cars that came on my street. Later on, one of my clients that is a probation officer, she had asked me, did this face look familiar? And when she showed me the face, it, the, the, the shape of his head, it was long, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure. But it did look like him. And she said that they had just captured him because they caught him trying to do a rape down the street from my house. So I believe that that was the same person. I didn't ask for like fingerprints because the last time my house got broken into, they were like, we're gonna do fingerprints. And then three years passed, they never got them. And then they were like, they said something about um, they're what, they wasn't want to do it no longer because they were backed up and it had exhausted.
Say it again, please?
They had exhausted. It wa- it went past three years. So they didn't want to do the fingerprints anymore.
Wow.
So that's what I'm saying. Like people, if we allow people to feel so comfortable to be able to steal any stores, they're gonna be very comfortable with just walking up in your house. And not getting no major consequences.
And there was another story you told me where, I don't know if it was, there were two people, somebody knocked on your door, but you couldn't quite hear them, right?
Yes. One time I was sitting in my living room and I was sitting at my dining table. I had my door open because it was in the summer, it was hot. I had my gate closed, the top lock, but the handle part was not locked, but the bottom part was. But as I'm sitting at my table, my kitchen table, I see my handle moved. But I thought, did that just move? And so it's scary.
Movie or something? It's like going eh?
Yes, it was going slow. I saw it move. And I, and I just thought, you know, did I just see that? I, I wasn't for sure. But as I saw it moving again, I ran to my door and I hurried up and closed it and I locked it. And then I opened up my curtains on the side, my blinds on the side, and I saw a man standing right there. And then I looked in front of him, it was another man um, right there standing by my car. So what he was trying to do was go on the side of my house to open up the door so the other guy can run in.
So wait, wait, wait. Okay, you're opening the door, right? And he's staring at you in the face?
No, he was on the side of my house. He had his hand over pulling my my gate uh, lock, I mean, my gate handle.
Where's, but where he couldn't be seen, kind of like?
Yes, exactly. Yes. And so my door was unlocked. It just, you know, that would have been very horrific. And so I called the police and they took a very long time to come. And you know, one time I was at the Popeyes. And it was somebody and he must have had a dress because he had a white t-shirt over his head and it was like really big. And so I was ordering my food and he came behind where you order your food from. He had this big old gun and he had it pointed to my head and I just screamed and I was just like, wait a minute, wait a minute. And I just drove off. And then I called down there to Popeyes and told them what happened. They said they had it on videotape and that, did I want to come down to see it? I said, no, they had called the police and everything and they had locked the gate. Um, that's why now at Popeyes is only a one-way in and a one-way out because they had that gate open on the side. And he, that's where he had came in from. And now they got security. They got security because of what happened to me.
How? I will look at us another way. Did you approach your council member about this at the time?
No. I just, only thing I did was, I just always just called the police. You know, I didn't call the police about that incident. But things that, you know, people were trying to break in my house and things like that, I called the police and I made police reports about that. And um, I also made a police report of the time when I told you, um, it was two people in front of my house and they were smoking crack. And this was when I was, you know, kind of fearful of things. Now I'm a stronger because I've been through so much. And so I'm not scared of nothing no more. I, you know, I've been through so much to the point where I'm fearless. The only person I fear is God. And, but at this point in time of my life, you know, I was um, just fearful. And I saw them and I didn't say anything to them. And I just drove around hoping that they would hurry up and finish and just walk off. And um, as I would hit the corner, when I went around the corner, I saw a guy out there. He had his lights turned off, sitting in the middle of the street as if he was getting ready to a drive-by. I didn't worry about what he was doing because I was just trying to get home. So when I went around the corner, I saw the two people still in front of my house. They were on the sidewalk, but they were in front, blocking my driveway for me to get in. And I was just scared to say something to them because I didn't know if they had a gun. I didn't know nothing because I had already experienced what I experienced at Popeyes. I'd already experienced people trying to break in my house. So I think I had probably developed a little bit of PTSD and I just didn't want to try nobody. So um, all of a sudden, I had um, I just went around the corner again because they were still there. So when I went around the corner, the guy, he saw me again. And this is when he turned on his lights and he started following me. So he started going everywhere I was going. So I went faster and he went faster. I went to the 73rd um, Police Department and it was closed. So then after I leave there, you know, I'm speeding and I'm going upside, going up 73rd and I'm going around cars. And he's going around cars. So when I get on the freeway, I'm on the phone with the police and I'm like, he got a gun. You know, um, he's chasing me and I'm telling them everything and they're like, well, we don't have anyone out. I was like, you need to find somebody. And so finally, um, I'm on the freeway and it wasn't a lot of people on the freeway because it happened at nighttime. It could have been around 10 or 11 o'clock. And I can't remember what time it was, but it was kind of late. And um, it was a day before my graduation. Actually, I was graduating from Laney College at this point. And um, I did a U-turn on freeway. And I ended up off of Keller and that's when the police had ended up meeting me. And they were just like asking me questions like, well, do you know this person is? I'm like, no. You know, they were just sitting in front. I mean, he was around the corner from my house. And because I went around the corner twice, he thought I was looking at what he was doing. And I wasn't. I just kept going around the corner because the people was in front of my house smoking crack. And I was trying to um, give them time to leave because at that point I was, you know, I was scared to say anything to anybody at that point. Now I'll say anything to anybody at this point. So I feel like God had to prepare me. He had to send me through all those things. I didn't understand why at the time, but I understand now. Because I speak up about everything. Anything I don't feel is right, I speak up about it. And I'll fight for it. So as a Christian woman, my duties are to protect and serve. And that's just what I do.
Yes, ma'am. Hey, you know, I didn't ask this yesterday, but it comes to my mind to ask it just for the record. Were all the men stalking you black?
Yes, the one guy, he was um, he was African-American. Um, the guy that chased me um, on the freeway, he was um, African-American. Um, what other incident is? The guy at Popeyes was African Amer- African-American? Yes. And I don't understand. Some people are in, you know, survival mode, but you don't do that to people. They need consequences. And they also need to be rehabilitated before they come back on these streets. They need to go to jail.
Except for women, but maybe I'm old school. I don't care. I like being old school. I think, you know, that's what bothers me. It's like they're not trying to protect you. They're literally attacking. Well, no, they are not literally. They are attacking you.
Right. So the code, you know, back in our days was, you don't touch, you know, children, women, like, you know, you protect them.
Right.
But nowadays, they don't care. They robbing anybody to get whatever, you know, for their needs. And something has to happen. They can't keep getting slapped on the wrist because they go keep doing it over and over again. They need to go to jail, but they need to be rehabilitated. And then after that, they need resources. Because if they don't have resources, they're gonna just rob again. You know, these people, they need to um, have housing. They need to have jobs, you know? Because if you have a job, you're not gonna be thinking about robbing nobody because you have too much to lose. But if you don't have nothing to lose, you're gonna be robbing people.
Yeah. And you know, Ms. Thomas, something that comes to my mind after talking with you about this now twice is that you hear on local Bay area media seemingly every time, and I'm not being derisive of this kind of reporting, but it is out there. And you'll recognize when I say what it is, a Asian elderly woman gets attacked. You hear about it in the, in the local media. But if something like what happens to you happens as a black woman in Oakland, crickets. Am I wrong?
You're right. Um, because I, I don't really hear, you know, I, I do hear more about the Asian community, but I, I'm not going to say that they're not under attack because they are. I, and I, and you know, when I get in office, they would definitely have um, police patrol around the areas and downtown areas where they're doing all the bipping at mainly. And um, Hagenberger, because they're doing bipping over there too. But as far as African-American women, no, I've reported everything that I've pretty much been through and nothing has, you know, been on the news or may, you know, given to people for awareness or anything like that. So I've been telling my own story.
I apologize. It's not that the media can't put that out there too, but the white oriented media doesn't do that. And I'm saying, just like, that's what it is, you know?
Um, and we Well, it's, it's discrimination. It's, it's discrimination in parts of Oakland anyways, because if you look at the flatlands, all the trash is here, you know, homeless, crime. And you look up in the Oakland Hills or Rock Ridge, it's beautiful up there. That needs to be changed. Because we're from Oakland and we live here and we deserve to live in a clean, beautiful place.
Yep.
Just like how people live in the Oakland Hills and Rock Ridge and Claremont and things like that. So it's, it's discrimination because I'm thinking, are you just going to downtown Oakland to work and then you going straight up the hill to your home? Because you're not riding around in a flatland seeing all this trash and you don't care. It don't matter what politician comes in office, the trash is still there. The homeless is still there. The crime is still here. You know, it was a shooting by my nephew's school, his elementary school. The police was there and I, I had explained to them, I said, what is the point of you coming after the shooting? You're not doing nothing but picking up the shells. We need cameras attached to these shot spotters. So that way, we can have footage, a car, a face. You know, something. So that's what I'm advocating for is having shot spotters because in Chicago, we have over 630 mur- uh, 600, I mean, six, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, over 600 murders
A lot.
per year. And by them having cameras attached to the shot spotters, it decreased by 43%. It decreased murders by 43%. We have over a hundred per year. And that's going to decrease a lot. And then a lot of these murders will be able to be solved because my sister murder is still not solved. And a lot of people murders are not so- solved because they don't have no footage.
You said your sister was murdered?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. It's 20, she was murdered in 2018 and now I raise her son.
Say again?
Yes, she was murdered in 2018 and now I raise her son.
You raised her son?
Yes. I've been raising him since he was six years old.
How old is he now?
Yes.
How old is he now?
He is 11.
11?
Yes. Yes. He just made it to sixth grade.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow. But he's proud of you.
Thank you.
If you win, what will your message be to the, the people who elected you and those who didn't, you know?
You know what? I have guided me and they can lean on me because I'm gonna take care of it. Everything that, that's in my power, I'm gonna take care of it all. Because I have to live here too. And it's just the right thing to do. We, I'm not soft on crime. I'm for helping, giving you all the resources, the training, the housing and everything that you need. But if you go commit a crime, I have people that's inboxing me all the time, businesses saying that they wish I was in office right now because their business might not even make it until, you know, by the time I get in office because there's so much burglary going on and, you know, their clients' cars, their customer cars are being bit. And the only thing that I'm telling them to do right now until I get in office is to tell your customers to roll down all their windows and unlock their cars because it works for me. I was just at one of my friend's businesses and I rolled out all my windows, unlocked my car, someone else's car almost got bit. Another time I was in downtown Oakland, I did the same thing and it was three cars that parked in front of me and all three of those cars were bit.
All three?
All three. They're not even looking to see if you have something inside your car. They're just breaking a window and then looking. And then if you only have liability insurance, just make sure you have a GPS. They're like $12 and you can get them on Amazon.
Yeah, someone the other day on Nextdoor said they had their car stolen twice by the same people, but the second time they put in GPS, or he did, and he was able to find it. And he says, that was a good idea. He said that car manufacturers today should be made to put GPS devices in their cars as, you know, a part of the sale. What do you think about that idea?
Yes, that I totally agree. So on my page, I, you know, educate people on what works for me. And what's been working for me is rolling my windows down. And if you coming from the airport, just go straight to your destination, drop off your luggage and all your important valuables and then go get you something to eat. Because they are bipping cars in a matter of like six seconds or less.
Wow.
And I'm tired of paying $300 for windows. So I caught on very quick.
Let's everybody get to know you. First of all, you said eat. What do you like to eat? Do you cook in? Do you go out? Where do you go? What's a day like for you?
Well, I do like to cook. And um, well, on holidays, I like to cook. But for the main part, you know, uh, right now, I'm just drinking smoothies and eating nuts and eating fruit. That's all I'm doing right now. But most of the time I eat chicken and broccoli is my favorite. And um, occasionally I'll eat gumbo. But those are like my favorites.
Do you make your own gumbo?
Yes, I do. My grandmother has recipe.
Can you share your grandmother's masterpiece with?
No, I can't. Look, you're more than welcome to come and have some anytime when I make it.
Not when I'm in town, definitely.
Yes.
I'm hungry for gumbo. My lord.
Yes.
Are your parents still with us?
Uh, my dad, he passed away from um, suicide. And my mother, yes, she's still living.
Wow. She in Oakland as well, or?
Um, Belayo.
Belayo, near, yeah, near, near, near brothers and sisters? Your sister passed away, brothers?
And so I have two brothers left and they're both in Belayo as well.
Okay, I rise up, up north, as they say, basically. Uh, what do you like to do for, like, do you like movies, entertainment? What do you like to do there?
Yes, I love movies. I love movies that have a message. If they have a message, then I'm watching it. If it don't have a message, then no. But one of my favorite movies is Harriet Tubman. Because he just really shows the power of God working through her. And I pray a lot. Um, I read the Bible three times and now I'm reading the Dead Sea Scrolls. And so I'm very, have a very close relationship with God. And I try to make sure I follow the Ten Commandments.
Do you have a favorite Bible passage, favorite part of scripture?
You know, all of it is, I don't have a favorite, but I, my um, my go-to is you ask not, you have not.
See, mine is a, Lord is my shepherd, I shall not be in one.
Yes.
You know, which I, I try to remember. What?
And so when I, when I um, when I see the homeless, you know, I'm always like giving them food or tents or things like that. You know, I always ask, I always tell them, you know, pray, pray for everything that you need. Because you have not, because you ask not. Just ask God and you will see and he will deliver. He will give it to you. And I just leave them with that, you know, because And I just leave them with that, you know, because you could pray anywhere.
Absolutely. Let's talk about sports because I get A's people popping in. Uh, what do you think about the A's leaving and now the Oakland roots want their own little stadium on the side of the Coliseum? They're gonna uh, request an exclusive negotiating agreement next week. You have any thoughts on what's happening with sports in Oakland or not happening?
Well, I don't agree with the, us allowing the leg, the A's to leave. Whatever funding they need, we should give it to them. And they didn't, we didn't created many memories with them as, you know, me as a child and everybody else I know, you know, that goes to the A's games and things like that, but whatever they need, we should be able to provide. And I don't know if they're leaving because of the Coliseum hasn't been remodeled. But we should remodel it. We need to remodel all Oakland. And starting with, um, when people leave from the airport, they go straight to international and they seeing nothing but graffiti, trash and homelessness. I can clean that up immediately. All it takes is renting dumpsters, putting the trash in bags, throwing away, power washing, fixing the fences, painting. And then, once we, once we take care of the main parts of the street, which is the front part, which is international, then we start block by block. No camp zones. Some people want to be homeless, so we have to respect their rights, but it should be a tent area. And we should be able to provide the resources that they need, new tents, sleeping bags. My auntie was once homeless and um, she's not homeless no longer because she got shot over there on eighty-four by a stray bullet. And her son
My lord.
In front of the police. He was sitting right there, just sitting point. And how I noticed is because when someone called me and told me your auntie, you know, just got shot and I packed up her tent and everything because she wanted to be there, you know? And so when I got there, I didn't know where, exactly where it was because they had already taken her away from the ambulance and the police was there. It was like, I saw everything, like it was, it happened right in front of me and they, you know, they ended up taking her. And so it was just stuff like that. The people, the criminals, the, it seemed like the civilians, you, I mean, the police is scared of the criminals, I believe, because we have to have stronger, we gotta get the a- bad apples out. But we have to have more leadership. We have to have officers that care, you know, about Oakland and and want to protect and serve. Because I have a lot of footage on my page where people are doing things in front of the police and they just doing absolutely nothing, so.
There's a, there's a rally coming up this Saturday, right? The ninth?
Yes, and I will be there.
Yeah, tell my viewers about it.
Yes, so, um, I believe there's something that Seneca is giving. Yeah, Seneca Scott, that he's giving, he's, he's such a great, I, I really like his politics on, you know, he gets the job done. And so, um, I've
One of our bloggers. Hear that Seneca?
But, um, yes, he's, he, he takes leadership, you know, and is very professionally done and, um, I respect it. And so we're just all wanna put, you know, our heads together to try to help make Oakland better and give all our ideas, you know, and get Oakland cleaned up and safety first.
And I gotta ask you too, have you did you think, hey, you know, I shouldn't run for the district seat, six council seat, or did that ever occur to you? I just want to talk about that for, you know.
So actually, um, I had, had a billboard on Seventy-third and, um, International and it was for my business. And so my cousin had called me and he was like, I saw your billboard. He was like, would you go be city council next? And I was like, you know what? That's a great idea. So I had tried to apply back then. I'm district six. So I had tried to apply and I was too late. And so I just thought it was over because I'm like
Your billboard is still there?
No, it was only, it was up there for like two months.
Okay, so I was saying, hey, everybody drive by, you can see.
Yes, it was, um, Oakland's finest sewing weaves. Because I, I, um, I do sewing weaves on clients that have alopecia. Affordable weaves for clients that have alopecia. And if, if no one knows what that is, is
I don't, what is that? Yeah.
Yes, so alopecia is thinning hair or missing hair, so. Yes. Yes. So that's my passion. And that's, you know, what I've been doing ever since, you know, I graduated.
That's, because I would think that's, uh, my mom is eighty-nine, so I know she'd love, thought that she's losing her hair. She's done a great job maintaining it, but she understands fully what that's all about, so, wow. How do you get your clients?
Uh, mainly by word of mouth, but I do, I, I've had commercials and billboards. I also had a billboard, um, actually by the Coliseum, um, the one that's right there off the freeway off of, um, A eighty. Yeah, I had a, um, billboard there as well. I even had planes in the sky that said my name, so pretty much everybody know me from doing hair because I do affordable sewing weaves for clients that have alopecia or thinning hair. And it's something that's a passion of mine, but you know, a lot of my clients unfortunately lost their children to Oakland. And so, yes. I even, I even, um, have someone that's on my page. She lost both of her only sons. She had two sons, but she lost both of them to violence in Oakland. So it's a common thing and we just have to change it. But we need strong leadership. We need people that's not soft on crime.
I want to get your view on something that I said yesterday. I said that in re- re- response to shooting being at Skyline High School, my high school, the Titans. You went to Fremont, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but, sorry. Folks, I am at safe distance where she cannot reach out and kill me, so it's like but seriously, I made a statement that, uh, friend I don't think understood. I said that when I was coming up, Skyline was not known for having shootings. And you're nodding in agreement, right?
Oh, yes, that was like the uppity school, like, you know, it was up in the hills. But see, this is
Go ahead.
Yes, I mean, a skyline was always, you know, one of the more, you know, like schools that wouldn't have nothing like this. Like on the flatlands, I, I can expect that kind of stuff, but in the Oakland Hills, no. But this is not the only shooting that had happened up there, like, because you know, the older lady that they shot at, like, I think twenty-seven times, but she shot that.
That's right.
Yes, that happened recently, probably about a month ago. So there, I believe it's going to be a change now because it's shrinkling up the hill now.
That's what I'm getting at. My friend got after me and said, so you're saying that crime should only be in the flatlands? I said, no, I'm just pointing out a fact. She didn't watch the video. I'm just pointing out a fact. Fact is that Skyline, my school was the main feeder school to Cal. We've had generations of families that sent their kids to Harvard. Yeah, that, and folks who look like me, who lived in the flats, their parents were trying to figure out who they could know up there, literally who could, they, they could know, which means they had to meet somebody up there. They didn't know anybody already. So they could use their address to get their kid into, uh, the best school.
Yeah, it was one of the best schools.
Right.
One of the most safest schools.
Yeah, the best, uh, anyways, anyway. The best, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And so now, you understand what I'm saying, though. I just wanted to get that.
I mean, I, Fremont is the best to me, you know, but I know what you're saying. It was the more safest school. That's what I'm meaning about the best. It was the best safest. But Red Bull School though, because I'm gonna read mine, Fremont all day, Fremont Tigers.
Keshia, this section of the interview is about you, okay? That's what she's trying to blast me on Twitter. I didn't even answer back. I said, did you watch the video? So anyway, right, thank you. So anyway, um, what are your feelings about the current mayor and her, her job?
I just feel like we are in a state emergency, so she should state that we're in a state of emergency and give us some help. Um, it was just a shooting earlier at five thirty this morning. So people tried to break in. As they were breaking in, someone pulled up and started shooting at them. And then it was a shootout Oakland at five thirty in the morning. And so I don't know what she thinks. Yes, so, well, how bad does it have to get? How many children have to die? You know, or get baby is paralyzed right now from a shooting that just occurred. And, um, how many more lives are to be taken? You know? People are literally scared to go out, like they don't wear purses, no, women don't wear purses no more. Uh, people are not, you know, carrying anything, you know, that's valuable on them no more. They don't leave none of their cars. We gotta leave our windows rolled down. We have to cater to the They should be scared to commit a crime, but they're not scared to commit a crime because they know they gonna get right back out. The mayors and stuff that's held accountable, that needs to be held accountable because they don't, you know, it's seeming like they don't care. I don't know if they live in a good part of Oakland and they don't have to experience what we're experiencing. But I believe that's why I had to go through what I had to go through because I go understand everyone's pain because I'd been through everything. But if you haven't been through nothing and you're not really from Oakland, I'm really from Oakland, born and raised. But I have never seen Oakland get this bad. But it's only this bad is because they're being soft on crime. We have to get them laws changed. They need to repeal the laws. Proposition forty-seven needs to be repealed.
And that's the matter of having the limit on when you can be Yeah. Re- repeat that one more time, please. I think you're
Yes, nine hundred and fifty dollars is how much they can steal before they get prosecuted. And, you know, to even get a dispatcher on the phone, that takes a long time. So people don't even bother even calling because and in a minute, people insurance is not going to keep paying for these claims, you know? And that's why the Walgreens are shutting down. The one over here on eighty, uh, I believe it's eighty-first, I believe, is no longer there and many will follow. Many businesses are going to follow. Because they don't care. We need somebody that's in office that care about Oakland, that's really from Oakland, that really love Oakland. I love Oakland. I'm from Oakland, born and raised.
I'll ask this again. I, we talked about it yesterday too on the video, didn't make it, but have you met Rebecca Kaplan, had a chance to talk to her? She's the current at-large council member, has been that for quite some time.
No, I don't have a problem with meeting her. I haven't met her, but I don't have a problem with meeting her to help her. Because every politician that we had in office, I have never saw a change. It's still trash, it's still homeless. It's still, you know, people running around here with no jobs. And we have a lot of jobs that can be given away because when I spoke to one of the clerks at, um, the city of Oakland, um, we talked about the trash and she said, asked me that I remember that time where they had, uh, dumped the trash at Libby Shaq's house. And I told her I remembered it and she was saying, and I said, well, why aren't they not picking up the trash? And she said, well, we had over seven hundred jobs available that wasn't filled. And I said, you mean to tell me that you couldn't go and tell these people that they had jobs? If it was me and I was in office, I'm coming to the flatlands. Y'all need a job. I'm putting them out at libraries, you know, I'm going to the hoods, everywhere. Everybody want to be working. If everybody is working, people will have something to lose. And if you have your housing, you have a job, you're not going to try to jeopardize that. And if you do, then you need to be locked up. And we're gonna try this all over again. You need to get rehabilitated, then you come back home and we'll start it all over again. But you need to be held accountable for the things that you do. And you need to be scared about the things that you do. But they're not because the laws are so soft. Twenty-five and under, that's getting away with murder, literally.
Gotta stop.
Yeah, it was a senseless murder recently. And because he was under twenty-five, he only got three years.
Does that mean you favor the recall of Pamela Price, the Almy County District Attorney?
Yes, I do.
Have you met her by chance?
No, I haven't. I do understand her stance where she wants to ha- help the brown and the African American, uh, because you know, sometimes they could, you know, go overboard with our time. But murder is off limits. Like you cannot give nobody three years for committing a murder, like no.
I am, I put
At least ten, you know, uh, for a child under twenty-five. Because you know, their brain is, is not developed until twenty-five, they say. And they need to be rehabilitated before they come back on the streets. They are letting them get out and they're committing the same, they're, they're doing the same thing over and over again.
I am writing your webpage URL, its address. That's right, yes?
Yes.
Selika Thomas for Oakland City Council dot com. Yeah. Well, uh,
No, I knew that didn't look right. It's Selika Thomas.
Okay.
For City Council dot com.
Thank you, okay. Thomas for Oakland City Council com.
Oakland out. It's just Selika Thomas for City Council dot com.
Yeah, got it.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Wow. Be safe out there, please.
You know, God is protecting me.
I have not had a single, only other person, I apologize, you know, if I have to say this.
It's okay.
The only other person who I've interviewed, in all the years I've interviewed Oakland electoral candidates that has had such a riveting experience. Actually, there's two people. Although technically, neither one of them matches yours. And the first person is Patrick McCullough. Who ran for mayor in two thousand, was running in two thousand, uh, fourteen. I interviewed him, so you're still up here on Zoney sixty-two, Patrick McCullough. Looks kind of like a cross between SEAL and, um, the Barb Burton. Two thousand and five, he was cleared by the Courts of Self-Defense for shooting a man because that man was selling drugs on his doorstep. And he asked him to leave and he wouldn't, so he gave him another chance. He wouldn't. Patrick just, okay, blam. You know? He didn't kill He didn't kill him though, as I recall. But he had had it. So.
Yeah, a lot of people are fed up. I feel like the murder that happened this morning at five thirty in the morning, I believe those are just regular civilians riding down the street and saw them breaking into a business and they just start shooting at them. It's not, it's not legal, so we can't do that. But I think that, you know, you keep pushing somebody, keep pushing somebody, you go push them to the edge and, you know, they go into, you know, people are gonna take, you know, they're gonna stop, they're gonna not want no more losses. They're going to take things into their own hands because the law is not doing anything. It's lawless out here. God even gave laws. He gave the Ten Commandments.
Memes, that's right, yeah.
So we can't be somewhere where it's just lawlessness, like what were they thinking? The DA of, they used to be of San Francisco, but now he's over in Los Angeles. He the one that came up with proposition forty-seven. And what, I don't know what he was thinking about that, raising it to nine hundred and fifty dollars. That's where all the chaos is coming from. It's just, it, it just, we need strong leaderships. We need people that's not scared to do it. And I'm not scared to do it because everybody can benefit for me. You know, the felons, you know, the working class, everyone, because I'm, I'm willing to help everyone. Cause if we help them, then they go, we, we help the felons, they go stop. If these are the ones that stealing, they're gonna stop stealing.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
If they continue, then they gonna have a consequence for it. And the consequence is that needs to be put, they don't harsher consequences is not gonna be worth the crime no more. It's worth the crime right now, is what they're looking at. Nine hundred and fifty dollars is a lot. So it's, it's worth the consequences to them. But you know, um, I, I've just known, I just lost so many people to Oakland, you know, with the crime, it's just so senseless, like cause nobody is fearing anything no more, you know? And um, it's just, it's really sad.
Not trying to be good to each other, it seems, you know.
But Oakland can be saved, though.
Hey, by the way, do you have a favorite restaurant in Oakland you like to go to or favorite haunt or?
Actually, in um, Oakland, when I go and sit down, I'm gonna be honest with you, uh, for soul food. Wise choice. Got some very good food. When you come down here, make sure you check it out. Her food is very delicious.
Did you ever go to Brown Sugar Kitchen?
I have been here before and it was very good. I had brunch there before and it was really good. Um, another one.
I like for pizza, I like, it's called the Star on Grand Avenue. And it's actually better than Zachary's. I have to, that's just, I have to get that out there. And then for steak, I like to go to the alley, which is my favorite place to go and just sing Sinatra. That's thirty-three twenty-five Grand Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh, my, my longtime friend, hey, everybody, go to, go to the alley and tell them
Have some very good steak too, Galatos.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, you have to try it.
Yeah. But everybody go to the alley because Jackie's special, been a special friend for a long time. I had my, my fortieth, I can't believe I'm saying this, I have my fortieth, but I am, I have my fortieth and fiftieth birthday there.
That's nice. Oakland is beautiful.
It is, yeah, yeah.
And that's why we gotta protect these businesses, you know? We have to protect them so they can stay thriving, because if they don't, we ain't gonna have no revenue in Oakland. It's people already that don't even, that's why the Oakland Airport wanna change its name. Because of the stigma that comes with saying Oakland. The first thing they wanna think of, you know, people think, oh, I don't wanna get bit, I don't wanna get robbed. So many people have been robbed in Oakland, it's ridiculous. You know, Simone, the comedian, she came out here not too long ago and her car got bit for all her items that hurt and the main thing she was sad about was her Bible got taken, got stolen. And then when Live Jennings was out here, his car got bit and they stole all his jury, over a hundred thousand worth of jury. And so, cause a lot of people, and that's why I feel like businesses need to have signs and letting people know, look, have your windows rolled down, keep your valuables out your car, have your door locked. Because that's what I had told my friend at her business and her customers haven't been getting their windows bit no longer. I mean, it's just what we gotta do right now until they change the laws, because the criminals are taking over.
It's a slogan. There's your campaign slogan, the criminals are taking over. Yeah, well, you can't just, you have to add something on to it, cause you don't want to be like
Like, I know, something that I have to say that I, you know, I'm gonna help you.
The criminals are taking over, make me your council, your, your council member, right? Yeah, on that note, uh, folks, I'm gonna have her back. And Oh, you can't? What'd you do? Uh, a little bit. You did something there. Okay.
Wait, I gotta put my earpiece in because it's not.
Okay. Yeah, let me see if that's not causing an echo, cause we're fine up until Okay. Let me try something here.
It's a common thing.
Okay, well, recording is good, but anyway, I was gonna say, we'll have you back. Cause that was fifty-eight, six minutes and fifty-seven seconds, fifty-seven seconds, yeah. Hey, stick around in the background. And everybody, thank you for uh, joining me. Nine thirty NFL predictions and preview, right here. Subscribe to Zenny sixty-two on YouTube. That ends this podcast. Thank you.